Resolution 2025-22 amendment to the 2526 budget. This resolution is amending the 2526 county budget by moving $15,000 from the general finance administration account and adding it to general law enforcement, jail, and medical, which will have an expenditure amount of
This is the resolution we discussed after visiting with Mr. Jenkins last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-22 amendment to the 2025-2026 budget.
Second.
Motion properly seconded to approve the 2522 amendment to the 2526 budget. Any discussion? If all was in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Almost back on track.
How many minutes do I get?
Maybe you're on.
Two.
Two.
Oh, two?
Says you got quite a few here, actually.
Oh, wow. Stephen, you got really long, everything I talked about, we could get lots of time. Here's a pass.
Just don't miss your back here.
Hey, I'm just, Carolina, so I'm a county assessor. Should we all know that? I was just coming in to do kind of update on the office. The first thing I'll tell you, because we literally just talked about it, I went and checked Ted 's account, and he already has an exemption for county road for Old Highway 85, because that parcel actually goes down south to parts that we don't care about, the part that goes to the old dump. He's getting exempted for all that road, and it looks like it extended to the bridge. So, he's already getting a tax break on that.
Okay.
300, 400 feet or whatever, so. Road and Bridge's website says that's a designated county road. That's what it says. He's getting an exemption for it, that's all I'm gonna say about that. Those county roads are fun. Anyway, on to our, actually, I'd like to update you. So, property tax relief is here again.
Sorry, hold up.
And you'll be getting a copy of it shortly.
You had to, you had to riveted on your.
Sure you were, I didn't really turn that down as much as roads anymore. If I could possibly help it. So, the long-term homeowner's exemption is available again this year. Legislation currently says it was for '25 tax year, so we've already done it one year. And now they're going to take applications for it for '26. Those applications will not be available until October 1st. A little flyer went out with the tax bill, so we've had several people in wanting to do it like immediately. It's just not available until the 1st or after. If they qualify last year, they just have to sign an affidavit. They don't have to fill out a full two-paper application. And there is a draft bill to repeal the sunset date on it, working its way through the joint revenue committee. So, we'll find out at session whether they're gonna continue to do it past this year or not. But in the meantime, it's for '26, so if anybody needs the qualifications for the long-term homeowners, they can come see us after October 1st. The homeowner's exemption was the 25% off. The legislators passed in the last session that every residential structure and associated land of the 35 acres would receive 25% off. And that was automatic, nobody had to apply for that. It just had to be residential improvement, and so it was just dumped into our system. And every residential structure and associated land receives that 25% off for 2025. The bill reads that for 2026, it has to be an owner-occupied residence. So, that's going to eliminate the 25% off being applied to second homes, rentals, anything like that. And now you have to apply for it. It's not automatic, so you have to go online for this one. And on that sheet, there's a website. You can go to it now and read about it, but the application, it isn't open till October 1st on that one either. And we haven't been able to preview what that looks like, because it's online and it's not available yet. So, first thing, October 1st in the morning, I'm gonna come see what it looks like. But the state recommended we have a station to help people who may not have internet or computers at home. So, I'm a little limited on that, but I did have a laptop that we received a handful of years ago, five or six years ago. I did have Golden West go through it with me and update its operating system. And it will hook up to the internet and it will pull up the website. So, I will have a laptop in our office for people that can't, or won't, or don't know how to sign up. We can help them over in our office during business hours. And I'm hoping to contact the libraries and maybe doing like a day and kind of publicizing. It'll be there to help people if they wanna come to the library, Newcastle, but like I said, I haven't even talked to the library yet, so I'm not sure that's a go, but it's just thinking out loud on that one. There is no sunset date on that one right now. So, like I said, everything's subject to change. Things move a lot faster than they used to about that. So, I wanted to update you on that. Both of these applications are due, no, that's not true. The long-term homeowner's is due May, no, later than May 27th. It's the same cutoff date as the veterans. The homeowner's exemption cutoff date is February 1st. A lot of dates to remember, but they have ample time. If they do it this fall, I'll get it over with. But one of the sticky things about it is you have to own the property on January 1st. So, if you fill out the paperwork now and sell your house in December, you get to start over. So, just, there's a lot of fault track on it. But if anybody has any questions, or if you know of anybody that has any questions, we're more than happy to answer any of it. I did scan this and I did put it on social media and just tried to get the word out on that. So, vents is the same. Our veterans can come and sign up anytime, right now for the 2026 year, and that's due May 27th as well. The property tax refund is not running through our office, but we will have applications for it in probably April, March, April, it's due in June, to the Department of Revenue. We don't actually take those, we just help distribute the applications. And that would be a refund on your taxes paid for '25. So, that's my update on property tax relief. The second thing I was just gonna kind of mention, like doesn't require immediate action by any means, but we had a problem with our truck. I don't know all the window, but the short story is our four-wheel drive is broken, and it requires a part that is no longer made because of our truck's age. Newcastle Motors was kind enough to do some research and found us a used part online. It has a, I believe, a disc or wheel. Forgive me, Gary, I'm trying to like, oh my goodness. It's something to do with the transfer case and the four-wheel drive. They found a part online that has a one-year warranty, and the part and labor will be about $1,600. I currently only have $3,100 in my budget for all maintenance and fuel for the rest of the fiscal year. This is just a foreshadowing to the end of the story, that I hope to make my budget last for my truck. But I've already had a larger-than-expected expense on it, just FYI. We're gonna try to make it work. They have been really good with working with us and not doing anything extra frivolous, just whatever it takes to keep the people safe, driving it, and really nothing more than that. Last thing, our deputy assessor, Stephanie Deerfield, will be resigning at the end of the month. So, if you see her, please thank her for 10 years of her dedicated service to the county. She's going to be missed greatly, and I will start advertising for that position probably at the beginning of October. And on that note, perhaps in the future, not now, like I said, we could maybe discuss reevaluating our pay schedule or salaries here going forward to better suit the needs of our positions as they evolve with the time. And we're still using the same tier that we have been for some time. Something to think about?
Good care.
Did I make it?
Good job.
Any questions for me?
Just an FYI, the committee was also thinking of doing away with it, eight-month residency for a second.
Yes, yeah, they are thinking about a lot of things. I don't think that they could clearly define the eight months.
Yeah, I didn't see a draft bill or anything on that, cause I, there was talk of pushing the bill deeper that eight months.
They want you to live in your house eight months out of the year. I think their intention was to kind of eliminate snowbirders. But the way it was written, if you have to own your house on January 1st, and the deadline for the application is in May, that's only five months, like if you just bought the house. But you are allowed to have paid residential property taxes in line for anywhere in the state for 25 years. So, I think it was just kind of a language thing that kind of got overlooked and it was generalized. And I think they are trying to kind of just get rid of it altogether, because the interpretation of it was getting really muddled. But yeah, they're also talking about getting other property taxes altogether. Repeal the whole chapter. So, really, there's nothing off limits in the committee right now. So, stay tuned. There's a committee meeting in Cheyenne in November that I do plan on going to, because their topic is almost always property. Grace is turned.
Thanks, Karen.
It's Grace.
Oh, Grace is turning.
Yeah.
Oh, Grace, we're good. How are you? I was, we're trying to do our strategic planning for our street projects for the next five, 10 years. One of what I'm interested in doing is working with the county for Norrisi Road. I've spoken with Scott, head of district engineer for White Eye. They do have a project coming up in 2029 that we could actually include this project on.
Greg, so the 2380 feet you're proposing here, how much of that is county road? How much of that is city?
From what my understanding, it was all Morrisier, just like me.
Even that little chunk up to.
Yeah, we, during the One Oak project, this came to light.
It's gonna take a lot more than a five-person economic development board, or the seven-person city council, or the five-person county commissioners, or even the hospital board. The public, at this point, really needs to have a stake in the game and needs to come forward and to have some honest discussions and some ideas. And even more than just the community, I'd say the younger people, those younger people in their twenties that are in Newcastle and Weston County raising their kids, those people that don't want to leave, those people that want their kids to grow up in Newcastle and graduate an NHS doggy just like they did. Those are the people that are going to have to step up and come forward and offer some solutions and do a little bit of soul-searching and becoming a more active member in the community.
And that's why even that little chunk up to. Yeah, we, during the One Oak project, this came to light. One Oak wanted to pay the city a certain amount of money to help with road improvements due to their truck traffic being in the road. At that time, we, city engineers, at that time, found out that the county actually owns a paved portion of the road. So, we hadn't done anything with it since.
I think you remember that now. Water line or something up there that you guys had to dig up or something.
Actually, what that was, was an old repair. Don't know who did it. What they did is they used clean rock. Found the old pictures here recently. Use clean rock to fix a, send a wet spot to the road or a bad spot in the road. Problem of doing it that way, especially with the paved road, that moisture getting in that rock and staying. And then it sort of saturating the pretty fine soils we have. And there's only two options, dig it out or open it up and dry it out. We dug into that gravel when we, when we were fixing a bad spot in the road, it was something. Our water line is about another 20, 30 feet to the south of that. So, we dug out all the gravel, dug out all that rock, went back with native soils with GeoGrid. We put GeoGrid at the bottom as well as underneath the J-bays, underneath the asphalt we put in. Yeah, that was the actual problem with that, with that repair. Ran into this several different places. There isn't a way to get the moisture out, either through evaporation or channeling out through drainage or some sort. You end up with these kind of problems. But since then, we've, I've started to work in a capital maintenance plan, including our streets. We, White Department of the County, since the county actually owns the road, to do a mill and overlay, we're looking at. Connecting this with the White Eye project that they have coming in 2025. They're bringing a mill and overlay, I think, somewhere near Ousage, maybe. Engineer's got to think. Guess it gives time to find out, since it's four years out.
Has Jim seen any of this?
What's that?
Has Jim seen any of this?
Jim.
Road and Bridge?
No, no, we couldn't. Coming to you first, if you can't figure out how to work together on it, then if we can, that's great. And I'll work with whoever you want me to. And that's why we're also coming to you this far out. Four years leaves every time, 20 minutes. 2029, we're planning on doing our tank and appliance or street portion of our water supply projects. I will be using that money. This gives us the ability to, for us to budget for this for that year without making any progress. Major road project.
You guys, I mean, I know this is preliminary, but you guys kind of think of like a 50/50 kind of share on it as well?
That's what we'd like to, like to see happen.
Can you leave another copy for Commissioner Urban or Chief? Do a mind read?
Yeah.
And what we'll try to do is not let this fall into the tax side thing and forget about it. Wonder if there's any state help, we can get them on it too.
And we are, with it being this far out, we are still looking for funding. So, we've identified this project for this year to that year. We're also seeking funding of some sort to offset the cost of this project.
That'd be the time, you know, make sure, maybe if these county road fund, if it's, everything's in place for that, that would be good. Give revenues for our funding to come from. Yeah. Let's make sure all the ducks in the road do that.
With White Eye carrying it with their project, the project management, engineering and all that, it's hard to, because neither the county or the city guys are gonna have to do what the majority got working. So, it does work well in parallel then. We've got another project we're planning with White Eye right now. It's a mill and overlay in South Summit, where you're stopping with county road improvement on Old Highway. We're picking up and taking, taking advice, so the whole thing, that whole is.
Thank you. Well, thanks for bringing, you got any questions for Greg?
If you'd like me to circle back in about a minute, that works.
Yeah, I would, that way everybody's seen it. And we can do a little brainstorming, like Evan was saying, if we can use some county road funds and figure out a way to budget it in. Part of that's gonna have to see what Jimmy's got to on his list of needs and.
Well, and that's why we wanted to come in here early enough and.
Yeah.
Other than Captain.
My question's pretty good, Greg. When can Fire Hydrant be taken from the fairgrounds?
Everything else could break in soon.
I was just kind of curious, because that's on the Fire Hydrant, not that.
No, it's, it's, you wanna get it done before winter, we've got some other things.
Come on, okay. I was just curious, since I saw it, it's on, I'm just asking. Thanks.
Yeah, would you take another one of these?
Yes.
Unless you don't want to scan it, you know, but you do. Yeah, yeah, it's a couple of months or whatever, and we can. Questions to read in? No, it seems like a reasonable idea to try to figure out a problem or solve a problem.
If anybody's going, it's, it's been, it's time.
This road has been in need of some attention. I feel like the confusion of actually who owns it, it's got caught in the tracks of all of that, and probably the condition of the road is reflecting that topic.
Yes, and that's, that's why I wanna approach you and get something, get the wheels rolling on the bus. None of these projects are quick, easy, or fast, but definitely not cheap.
Maybe 10% more in four years.
All it takes is money.
Yeah, right. Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Contractors.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I do have that list on what the.
You gotta worry about this.
Oh, no, I'm not according to that clock. Oh, I guess I do, no. Here's the upgrades that the junior livestock needs to do. So far. And here's one to ready. And they're also going to start leveling out the shoulder. Cause it's got a dip towards the sheep barn, if you have a bear out there. It dips down and they wanna make that all level. So, what they're gonna do there is take the sod up, level it out, and put the sod up. I don't know if they're gonna do that this fall or in the spring. They're thinking this fall, but I don't, I don't like to think it's getting a little late. They're doing that to keep the grass alive. Or.
How they're gonna set the sod up?
They're gonna get a sod cutter? They're gonna lay out the sod cutter and do it that way?
I'll donate to use one.
Oh, I'll tell them.
It's, it's not fancy, but it works.
Okay, I'll tell them.
It's a walk behind, it cuts the 18-inch wide.
Okay.
They haven't reached out to me on that, saved me a little cost on that.
When you say add a new pipe on leaf tie outs, is that those, that pipe outside that they just buy?
Yes, on the south side of the beef barns. Yeah, they had to, because they get, they're, we're getting mappy in that there. And then, okay, and this is what I came up with as a flyer. I made two copies, but you can pass it down. For the rock wall.
Should've mowed the weeds first, Francis.
You what?
Should've mowed the weeds first.
Well, I did take the picture. Sorry.
Pick on France.
That's okay. But anyway, that's, and speaking of the rock wall, I was wondering if there's any way possible, since Bethany made the line item, the account, if we could put that $25,000 that we gave back to the town in the area from our income from the fairgrounds as an incentive in this account for people to donate to the, the Western County people, or donate to the rock wall. If there's any way possible, we can do that. I know it's a budget adjustment.
Let's sleep on that one.
Of the bricks, are they like small bricks or the?
No, it's two by two by four.
Okay.
Yeah, the big ones.
Large, landscape.
Yes. And $250 would, includes labor and giving the blocks to the fairgrounds. And what I was going to do is put it, I don't know if I'm gonna, we're gonna be able to afford to put it in both papers, but we're gonna put it on the, on our website.
And is this gonna do the portion of the wall that?
It's gonna do the whole thing.
The whole, all the way down?
That's what we're, what we're trying to do. Just get it up. And see if you gave the $25,000 back to us in this account, we would be affordable there to get the amounts.
They're paying 400 bucks.
I'm not sure, you guys got an estimate on how much they were? I've never seen those estimates, so I.
Concrete prices have probably gone up substantially since that, too, so it might be more.
Well, Mason said that they're like 65 bucks over the square fish. They're, I can't remember what he said Gillette was, but Jerry Fredericks in that one is 135.
They're a third of a yard each one.
So, and then the labor and the Vietnam here, because it's one of the first on my, on our semi. It's just an idea for the money.
I have a question about the electrical, who's, who's going to be doing that?
It's already done and paid for.
Who did it?
21 electric. And speaking of upgrades, I'm gonna go back. And speaking of upgrades, I'm gonna go back to that. The Four Seasons Arena is gonna need some upgrades on there in Electric City because we've got a few problems. And we do have one estimate, but we're getting other, there's nobody really, unless we're going out of town to give you more other estimates for that.
What about the doors?
We haven't got that far yet. We thought we'd go piece by piece, unless you want a whole, a whole building.
What's going on with the electric?
Um, there's a box that doesn't have cover on it, that's, and it's also buzzing. I mean, it could be a fire hazard or something, but.
There's a transformer where it defuses, so.
No, this is inside the, inside the building.
Yeah, it can be a transformer.
But they, twenty-one electric has been out there already and said that it needs up for the change tower.
Where's it at? Where's it at?
I don't know. I've never really went and looked.
I'm gonna look this afternoon.
David got the estimate, and I don't know if we have that this afternoon or not.
As far as the cover?
And they were gonna, we were trying to get some updates, like the lights, into LED lights, so it doesn't cost as much electricity light, and just a lot of updates.
Well, I think if you're gonna do stuff, get a, I guess, estimate from twenty-one, so we can look through it.
And we do have one. I just didn't have time to be able to get it before I got here.
They said the related places, isn't there? Rick's electric.
Yeah. We, we just haven't had time to get the, the tree that we need, so we, we can call Rick's and. Do we want to go out of town? I mean, out of town?
They're cheaper. I don't see why not.
They're cheaper, but they'll probably be harder to light. That's what I'm thinking.
I don't have any issue using somebody from Creek County or, or Campbell County if it's cheaper, I mean, in the long run. Not certain Wyoming company, the, I don't remember what the threshold is when you go, sort of go out of state, you have to get a certain benchmark on it.
Yeah, the benchmark where it has to be bid out, but that's like fifty thousand. You're actually have to put out formal bids, otherwise you just get courts or somebody to go.
At this, twenty-nine electric gave us an update, and it's expensive.
Sorry, I'll, yeah.
But you guys have to think about the, the money.
Yeah, we can't do anything today.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, is there any? I would really like to see it, but.
I understand. Well, what we will do is add it to next agenda and we'll have a discussion of it. That way everybody's prepared for it and hopefully we have a full board.
Be a man of sense then for the. But that's all that happened. I mean, everything else is going good. But we'll get to those estimates on those. Unless you want to, I don't know.
Well, I think you prioritize, like, I thought I heard somebody say the doors are the.
Yeah, the door, I didn't tell you that, but.
Somebody prioritize, maybe get something on that.
Okay.
And we, we have a little bit of money left yet for projects like Jason's stuff, so.
They will, we'll get an estimate on those, worse too.
Might be cheaper.
To get the.
Pre-annually than after they break and fall.
Yeah. There is one that's gonna just, yeah, go along first. It might just be the tracks that it's on that needs to be, you know, because the wind sits there, and we do lock on the people, you know, unlock them, and then the wind blows, and one of them blew off the track, so, and now we can't close it, so.
Still to talk, I've had that happen before.
So, oh, Monty and Tucker came and put it back.
They lifted it back up.
Yeah, and then when they pushed it open, and now you can't even close.
The wheels?
No, I, I think the wheels are off the track is what it.
The maintenance need to be re-lifted.
Or move track, and I think there is, according to David, move track somewhere, and that's where it's at. But we, yeah, we'll get those too.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else?
Any questions? Because everything's going good, yeah.
Good to hear. Take a ten-minute break. Sorry, I had to go. So, hopefully for anybody to come in and. Yeah. All right, twenty twenty-five law enforcement HVAC replacement RFP discussion. So you have some thoughts?
Yeah, the last meeting, we thought about putting out RFPs, maybe trying to consolidate one or two units together up over there at the law enforcement building. I tried to write up some RFP. Every time I, every time I did one, I looked back as a contractor to do it, there's no way I would even attempt to bid it. The problem is, the way that building is built, it's kind of in sections. I mean, in my opinion, it'd be better off if we just forge ahead and do one unit at a time like we, like we got a bid for, or else do, like, we got a bid for one year, set us a goal out there to do two units every year for the next four years, they'll all be done. Since nine years in that building. Trying to do it, consolidate all into one or several, there are a couple of them, Mayo and Pandora's Box on, with Fire Marshal, on things like that. By just changing the furnace out, we're, we're covered, we won't change in the integrity of the building, so. To do, to do it like one year, control the whole thing, it'd be cost, wouldn't even be cost effective, it'd be probably three, four hundred thousand dollars to get somebody coming in and put it that way, so. I guess, like my personal opinion, is go with the bids that we've got. Forward, forward every, every year, trying to do it, because reality, that building was built in the eighties, we got a pretty good run out of the furnaces in there.
It's shocking just the working, actually.
Yeah. You know, one good thing is, you know, the furnaces, if you have contaminated atmosphere, I lead a P D team, just lucky that's just like a residential area, so it's not contaminated atmosphere.
I don't really, I mean, I don't care with either direction, I guess.
He tried me.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I have the same thing, like retro, retrofitting or, or doing things to, to hook them together, we might be spending way more money on that miniature remodeling. That, that building needs so much that our money might be better spent in some of the other areas that, that really, really has some almost emergency needs for there, so.
And also, we don't know what, what's all gonna be done in that building, you know, there's plans down the road, it may change, and then that would change the whole master plan too, so.
Well, yeah, because when I looked at the floor plans, they're so old, and who knows what's been added and inifying, and with the new security system put in there, what's been removed? And on the RFPs that I did, it kept saying, you know, the electrician's responsible for this, and the county's responsible for this, well, without them coming in and basically writing a consult, it was like.
It was, it was.
It was overwhelming.
You got a copy?
Yeah. Here's off those two bids we got.
And then there was.
Yeah, there was an update on that one.
With their warranty.
Yeah, with their warranty, they basically, the update, one of the warranties matched, you know, they're basically the same. Those, yes, the bids we had earlier, all the dozen dollar amounts that changed, they just, one of them, they cleared up the warranty issue question we had. You know, they're moving forward, you're down, you have years down the road, you just have the Jason over there, you know, whichever unit's giving us the most problems, those are the ones we need to move forward with.
We get fire and removals?
Yeah, we haven't.
If we don't want to do it all in conversation, that would be the best path forward. Think about that, when you start having to tie in all the air duct work, it could be a tremendous amount of cost, isn't it?
Well, then, with, with remodeling going on here and there right now, let's just say you, you do some of that retrofitting of the air ducts, and then that causes problems with remodeling, or vice versa.
Yeah. And this way here, I mean, every, every furnace has kind of got its own segment that's kind of, almost look at it as like nine little buildings in one, is all, if you look at the plans, is what it almost looks like.
I would, I would make a motion to approve the bid from twenty-one electric for a new furnace, the law enforcement building, in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Discussion? I think that they provided, when they originally provided that, they had a, a good list of what our expectations were for what we like to, would like to see moving forward with our contractual work for equipment or building repairs, whatever. I was pleased with what they, they had.
Do they have the specific unit that they wanted to replace on this round?
Uh.
I don't know. Yeah, that was the one for the jail itself, I think. Yeah, one of the, one of the, Jason's got, they had figured out exactly which one, yeah. This, this was, this unit was the one that was costing the most for repairs and babysitting at the time. They, they band-aided, Mike said they band-aided it together, and it's still working at this time, but.
Has there been any complaints from that building as far as an extreme amount of, a extreme, extreme usage of power, anything like that? They haven't. Okay, well, as old as those units are, these are gonna be an improvement regardless, even though there are nine, the efficiency rating at ninety-six percent is pretty high for late models compared to what was available in the eighties.
Yeah.
Even though they were considering the one single unit that would accommodate all, I think in the long run, we're probably going to see the savings in utilities in that department, or that sort of.
Yeah, those furnaces are probably in the seventy-five to eighty percent efficiency that's in there now. And then honestly, I think we'll see a bigger increase on the air conditioning costs too, because the air conditioners got so much more efficient over the last ten, fifteen years too.
Another discussion? Motion, it's seconded on the floor to accept twenty-one electric's bid to replace the air conditioning unit over at the law enforcement center. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Annual property insurance and then reinsurance.
Okay, so I don't want you guys to have a heart attack. Our insurance went up a lot due to our Mallow claim, and then there was an auto claim, but the Mallow camp claim was six hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-seven, and the auto loss was nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty-two, totaling six hundred and eighty-five thousand six hundred and nine. Due to the Mallow loss being within ninety days of them closing it to our renewal, they had a hard time getting an insurance company to take us, have dropped us. That's the one that we had when we had our Mallow claim. They would not renew us. So, we, it went right up until last night for us to get someone that would renew us. So, our insurance, I put two hundred and fifty thousand in the account, we're going to have to add sixty-five thousand seven sixty-seven, or just take that out of financial admin rather than do a budget adjustment. So, the total amount, the auto did not go up from last year. The total amount for, for property is two hundred and forty-two thousand four thirty-five due to us, well, there was an increase again because we're still considering in the fires on, because of all of the trees. So that, that went up again. So you guys can look through this, and mark where the chairman needs to sign, and then if he approves, prepay's also, we can get those checks up. And there's an explanation on the front page of a non-renewal, and explanation of the Mallow claim, and the vehicle claim was definitely that year. We're hoping next year we can be picked back up by travelers.
So how much did the property go up significantly? Forty thousand?
No.
A hundred and twenty thousand?
Wow. So, that's the...
Vehicle is $73,000 and property is $242,000.
Well, they're not exactly...
Those change them. Seventy-three thousand and...
Seventy-three, three, three, one point six four. Problem is, as you said, these aren't exact numbers.
Well, no, you're not giving them the exact number.
Two forty-two, four thirty-five, forty-six.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
This is like where it gets good news.
Did you say you put $250,000 in the court?
So, we just need $65,767 to come out of the account.
No, we have a tribal account.
A what?
Tribal account. There's a hundred and fifty-four in there.
Was there a three-issue with the hotel up there? No, I can't tell. They call that the lodge, or is it just the hotel up top?
The hotel up top.
And that's excluded?
Yes, and the hill have a different... They said it's not, it's going to be very simple.
You buy extortion, what it's...
Yeah, because you need to drop you. Which one do you have it?
What's the total premium for the county?
Um...
Fifteen, seven sixty-seven, ten. Budgeting $250,000. About, we got the most on the shirt.
Mr. Lloyd?
Exciting stuff. We're all stunned.
Now, I want to puke.
That was about, what, a hundred and twenty increase?
Bear bad news.
One twenty increase.
Huh?
One twenty.
One twenty? Jeez. No wonder I hate extortion, uh, insurance companies.
They won't Mallow pay back in five years.
Basically.
Yeah. How long was that water?
Raise our premium so they get that money back in five years. But yet, we have a hurricane southward of the United States, or maybe twelve because of the hurricane.
God. How long was that water running before they found it? Few days, wasn't it?
Couple, anyway.
Couple of days?
Yeah.
What irritates me about it is the auto group, who owes the $240,000 for the mitigation of it. When I asked one of the contractors, like, he was like his jaw hit the ground. You're the chub group for, let's just come up here on Denver, mitigate the... Circle, like, write the sum up for $50,000 instead of $250,000. And now they're paying for it because...
You had to use their people, huh?
Yeah.
Ridiculous. Those feel like extortion.
That's why I said the end.
Let's move it forward.
Well, what happens to you?
I mean, currently, are we insured? Chubb dropped us, so currently...
Chubb will drop us, yeah.
They will, they will drop us.
They are not renewing.
When does this renew?
Due.
Now.
Now. I mean, we're, we have insurance right now?
No. Well, it's due now, yeah. This is how it always goes. Until the last minute, finding the best deal. Or the worst deal. I don't know which, which to say. Worst, best deal.
What's the name of this company?
Solberg.
Do they have an agent, someone whose agent we should go on to?
The same guy that we...
We'll have a guy. I don't like it, but I don't know what to do. Yeah, we really don't have a choice. I mean, we're... I don't, we can't be without insurance. If you ask for a major fault in that, that wouldn't be good. I'd make a motion that we approve the insurance premium for one year in the amount of $315,767 and 10 cents. And optimize Becky to do a prepay on that when the bill, when the, actually get the bill to come in. So, we are covered with insurance.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion is where we want to pull the extra six, the other $65,767. We don't have budget from our account, we've got to pull that out.
Pull that tribal.
I have no problem with that because that was revenue replacement.
Yeah. It's one and done money. Kind of what, what it was there for was for, we need fallback months.
I'm fine with that one, sir.
Any other discussion? So, this, it's just my signature on it? So, the motion, is may anybody add to pull, or pay the insurance claim, or the insurance, new insurance fee? And use the additional expense to come out, or pull the additional expense out of tribal funds? That was important.
I got it.
Okay. So... Yeah, so, all those in favor, the chair and signature on the aforementioned, um, motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Post. So, who are these, these are?
Yes.
I think that was the most lackluster "aye" I've ever heard.
Oh, idiots.
Oh, God. Yeah.
Thank you for what you paid for your home, our insurance covered one building. We got a lot of stuff covered, you know? In the grand scheme of it, it's not pretty, but it's...
Well, in doing this, we had to get the square footage of each building. And we've never had to do that before. And come to find out that indoor arena is a million dollars in itself just because of what's in it and the size and...
Well, and that lodge ain't tiny.
And then Mallow will be in so far away.
Yeah, there's that.
Referral.
Well, and each happened. It's just crazy if you really think about everything that the county does have and... And all the...
Our houses, because we're so far away from the fire hall, your insurance premiums are because of the distance.
Wow.
Well, and then we have the afterlife, we have the library here. We have all the road bridge, we have all the equipment. We have a lot of stuff. We have public health. Everything with the fairgrounds.
And we just, I feel like we kind of just got lucky on a couple of things this last year. The sprinkler system for the cowl wasn't too bad. And the frozen heater at the library could have been worse. And we have some things that we were lucky. We should look at that.
The age of our buildings too.
The age of the buildings.
And that's a thing that...
I'm sure they take that into consideration.
And the structure of what it's made of. That I had to tell all of that, and a lot of that I didn't know.
You should, you've been here for three years.
Yes, I have.
Conflict of interest form.
Okay, so you guys wanted me to update you at the next meeting who I'm still missing conflict of interest forms from. I have everybody's except sheriff, county attorney's office, and moral and security. I sent out another email to those offices and...
Could I just, if I could have a, just a second to talk about this a little bit? I just was thinking about employee stuff and how the law works. I did some research. This is what I thought is probably pertinent for you guys' consideration as far as... I just wrote you guys a little memo as far as conflict of interest form for the county. And I was just wanting to follow the law on it, especially with regard to employee confidentiality and stuff like that. So, that's sort of what I came up with after I researched everything, thinking about it a little more. Just so you guys can consider that.
I think it was mostly directed at, it was more for Paul than anything else, Michael?
No, I understood that. So, anytime if Paul needed anything from, say, any department, I suppose you could just call that department head and get that information. I get, I get that it was for Paul and his auditing purposes. I just had thought about it more. And that's what I, and it's not trying to be adverse or anything. I just wanted to cover our bases and make sure you guys knew that. That's where I think the law in the handbook falls on, how to handle that situation.
How do you feel about it then? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jerry.
What do you think the state requires that, Michael?
In Title IX, there's that specific statute about the state, it's 113 or something like that. It's the five state elected officials, and I think they're wanting to make sure that their financial disclosures are disclosed.
Why wouldn't that be of interest at a county level?
I don't know, because if you look at that... Because in the criminal code, the 655118 I cited, that talks about any public servant who invests funds for the county. Well, not many of us here actually do that, but we don't have a checkbook, you know? We just run a budget, we don't actually invest it.
Yeah, and this was, you know, I mean, and this wasn't designed for the monetary side of things. It was more for the conflict an individual might have. Like, I own 21 Electric and I was voting on...
Yeah.
You know, I mean...
Well, on the financial side of it, monetarily wise, that could be of, that could be part of a conflict of interest, but it doesn't have to be financially advantaging.
No.
Although it eventually could be, if there's interest. It could be, it could incorporate, but it's... It could be, it could incorporate, but isn't, it isn't mandatory. It would incorporate financials, but it would not be, it wouldn't have to be financially advantaged.
Right.
What you put in here that it's not required, but as an employer, just because the state doesn't require it, why can't we require it? Is there a law against us requiring it?
I, and I was just following the section 406 out of your guys' handbook. That's what gives you guys the authority.
This place is full of, you can tell the people that like to be with old people because they really take care of you good and are very kind.
Place a day, every day, activities people have been organized, activity that's always interesting.
Everybody loves to play bingo. We play it three times a week here. We also have ceramics that you can paint. Really pleasant to live here, it's a good place to be.
Is there a law against us requiring it?
I, and I was just following the section 406 out of your guys' handbook. That's what gives you guys the authority. That section 406 talks about filing the conflicts with the department heads.
I guess that's something maybe we could change. If we want it, if we want them to come out, everybody to do one, we could make it clear in our handbook.
Yeah, no, there, if a conflict does arise, they have, they have an employee or anybody involved and the county does have to disclose it. It's just where it's housed, basically.
So is your, your concern that? So are you telling me that you, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have your, your employees under you do the, the form or, because it's not required by the state? Or are you saying you want to keep those forms in your office?
I'm just saying I was, wanted to follow the county handbook and how it's, if they have a conflict, they have to disclose it. So.
So they don't have to disclose it until it arises?
That's how the.
How the.
That's how the handbook's written, yeah.
And? They would, and then that conflict would be, come to you? And then you would be responsible?
Or me, or Suzie, or Brian, yeah.
So then you would be responsible to do what you think is ethical at that point?
And I think it's, that makes, well, and it makes sense because you guys can't. You, you guys just don't have the resources to, somebody needs to oversee it, help you guys, right? You can't oversee every employee, right?
I guess I don't have, I don't have, I wouldn't have a problem with each department head keeping these forms to themselves, just like other things, your traffic certification and those kind of things. I, I still have, I have a problem with just waiting to do it when something arises. Because to me typically when you're hired, yes, there's going to be things arise that I would expect your, the people under you to tell you about. But a lot of this comes when you're first employed. Helps, to me, it helps you understand that we expect that from people, that, you know, you sit down and say, well, yes, my husband works 21 electric or whoever, ABC roofing, and so I can't get involved in that. Just an example. But, so some of that to me should be in the beginning to help people understand what a conflict of interest is. And if they have anything from the get-go, and then I guess, yes, it's, it's up to you as their boss essentially to make sure that you deal with any conflicts that you see or they bring to your attention.
And just to that point, it, it's arisen, it happens when they're hired.
Right.
I view our conflict of interest form as a preventative measure from this board. And even though the statute here says, I mean, I'm paid backing off of the state pretty heavily just knowing that the state itself requires that, even though the statute isn't incorporated into the county level. Common sense tells me that it is important for the state to know if there is a conflict of interest at that level of government. So if we're not breaking law, state law, by preventatively incorporating conflict of interest forms at a county level, my question would be, to whomever is, is debating it raises concerns to me. That does. If we have a problem with something that is preventative and asking, is it a, is it a an invasion of someone's privacy to ask if they have a conflict of interest?
No, I believe, I believe conflicts do need, do need to be disclosed pursuant to law pursuant to the handbook. It's just basically, harsh part of his words, housed and how it's managed.
We are. My kind of take on this is okay if somebody doesn't want to do a conflict of interest and our handbook requires it, and then it arises and they don't disclose it, they just open themselves up for a legal matter.
Yeah, that's correct.
My view on it is, I don't care if the world, it should be in the public eye. To see, because then Stan can hold me accountable if, if only Stan knows that I'm doing something, you know, and the rest of this board doesn't know.
I agree with that. I think, especially as elected officials, that should be completely public. Any kind of employee, but it just, it's where it is, it's, it's housed and how it's managed. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on what I thought, how the county handbook spoke to this. Because that's where you guys get your authority to carry this.
Question for Michael, is, do you feel that we're going above and beyond statute in, in asking for this on a county level?
No, no, not asking that they be disclosed. It's just basically the procedure and how do you manage and handle and store these things? What if, I'm sorry.
Well, I, and, and that, I think that's a good point. And maybe they should be kept in your office as the county attorney because if any conflicts do come up, you're going to be involved clearly immediately. You would be the one that we could, maybe we should go to and say, look at Mr. Smith's forum, is this, is this a conflict of interest? And, or, or you might review them and see something that we don't. So, so maybe they should be kept in your office.
Because some of the thing that I start to be concerned about is sometimes it might turn into a personnel issue that needs to be handled differently than just the general public having some of that information, you know? I'm not trying to say that general public should know about conflicts, but sometimes it might be a personnel issue, executive session type of thing, so.
My recommendation, I guess, then is if we go that route, it should come in front of the board once a year. And if a new hire comes in, it should at least come in front of the board to, just to view it. And if it's filed in your office or wherever it is, just so that there's some knowledge outside of your office solely of what there could be. I mean, and I'm not trying to pick on your office, I'm not saying you're interrupting bad business, I, I get it. Yeah, I think there should be. I think this, it wouldn't hurt anybody for at least our eyes to peruse through it once a year. And if it's a, things change all the time, so.
What, how do you feel about that? What is your recommendation?
Well, the, the handbook says that the department head gets it to, employee discloses it to, discloses it to the department head. And then I believe it'd be on the department head to take the correct action and inform you guys of.
Let's amend the county handbook.
These are just saying like, you work, or you are on that board, you are on, these are something totally different than what's in the handbook. These are something that you guys created, this isn't what's in the handbook. This isn't a conflict in the office. This is a conflict that you were, this isn't what's in the handbook. This is something that you guys chose to do because Paul asked you to do. This is, you own Renegade. You are on the airport board. You are on this board. That's what these are. This was a, her in my office, this is something totally different, totally different than what's in the handbook. It's not a conflict in my office. You feel like in handbook, it's just talking about inter-office conflict? Yes, this is something that Paul asked you guys to do her, like, outside of the county, you have a conflict. You own this business. Marty owns Admiral. And then the public can come in and view what the conflict is. It's not an inner-office conflict. That would be something that I would handle, that would be something Michael would handle, that would be something Kara would handle. These conflict of interest forms have nothing to do with a conflict within my office.
Well, I, maybe, I could, I don't think I made it wrong, but I think the county employee handbook talks about any conflict with the county, not just within the office. What I'm concerned about is at times, public officials, like, we're out there, right? But at times employees have a little more protections. And I'm not trying to say anybody's behind anything, I'm just saying employees at times have more protections than us elected officials, so.
The other one thing that I could bite back at that a little bit though is say, you own the bread shop on the corner, one of your employees own the bread shop on the corner and producing all the bread being bought, but the bread shop on the corner and the only protection then for when another bread shop down the street starts throwing the flag up in the air going, what's going on here? And I, I don't know that that employee owns that bread shop, so I'm signing vouchers. And it doesn't give me any ability to say, are we buying all the bread from one of our employees' bread shops instead of going down the street too? I don't know. And I'm not. I got a county road going through the ranch. It'd be not look kind, good for me to bark at Jimmy every week, say, come blade my road or put gravel on it or something, you know, so I don't know. You wouldn't miss something. I don't know, I just think the second set of ayes on it once a year wouldn't be a bad deal. And if that's what we, maybe need, if we need to amend the county handbook or add in to the county handbook just on pamphlet, I don't think it would hurt anything.
Yeah, I can review it again, make sure I'm thinking right on this. I just wanted to have this discussion to make sure we're all square, so.
Well, one nice thing too, I think if there's a other viewership of it, it might, when Paul brought up Garrett signed vouchers on the airport board, I emailed Garrett and said, hey, Paul's going to contact you. You can see signatures on the vouchers. And if I see something that, I could have said to Garrett, hey Garrett, probably don't want to do that. You're working both sides of the deal here to preventively, or to stop that prior to, like, if you see something that I'm doing or, or any employee potentially doing.
Could have been too, if you're a, a new commissioner and you didn't know I was on the airport, so you wouldn't have the idea with the conflict of interest form, that exposes possible conflicts of interest. Maybe, maybe conflict of interest isn't exactly the perfect word for what we're trying to do. Maybe it's a, an audit conflict? You know, it was, it was suggested by Paul, maybe this is more piggybacked off of an audit situation because that's kind of where it arose. But I think it's still preventative and positive for, for fair operations of county government.
And I don't disagree with that whatsoever, I just want to make sure we're following how it's going to be.
I'll reread the handbook, I guess. Let's, maybe busy about the next one.
And if you, if you would look at it again, yeah, maybe you'd have a suggestion as to how it should be working. I mean, handbook is something we should remember and it's going to have changes. So, that's okay?
If you want any business, thank you, Paul, the comments.
Freaking freezing in here.
Yeah, it really is cold.
That's why I wore a sweater.
Maybe you can pipe some of this over to the jail.
Hey, you got your leather coat on, so.
I had to zip it up.
Sheriff comment. Here, would you have anything you'd like to comment on?
No, I don't think so.
I appreciate the, the involvement of the school board today on, on the bus stops. And hoping in the near future we can come up with something that's going to be appropriate for that on both, on both of our ends.
So, we'll have a special meeting Friday at 11 o'clock. And the special meeting is only to discuss the.
BLM.
Was it Black BLM or Black?
BLM. Conservative rule. No, 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 wait, that was.
Conservation was what?
Yeah.
Yeah. Public, public lands conservation.
No, that's in the river. Special meeting, I'm going to sign the.
It will be on the.
Just a letter from Drew.
That will be based on National Grasslands.
About just, let's say, a special meeting.
For the chairman's, or vice chairman's signature on a letter from Drew, what Drew consulted, how about that?
Yeah, letter of comment from Drew on the final rule. And that will also be posted. Yeah, thank you. Put it on the.
Down the doors on the website and then on that because I don't. Put it on the.
Guys, here for executives.
No. Different as that, as much as before.
This question, is there some other thing that we have to discuss? Okay, we are going to. Have a couple of executive sessions. The first one is.
C is down.
Employment. So I think everybody will have to do their M except for us five. And if you guys don't mind, it won't be long. Call another one and have you in. Okay.
Make a motion, federal rules, to go into executive session 164-405A-XII.
Second. Motion properly segmented, go into executive session number 164-405A-XII. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you.